Roll call, and this is for our current seated members that are up here on the dais. So Ms. Lemus, do you want to do a manual roll call?
Member Thomas?
Here.
Vice President Jones?
Here.
President Hill?
Here. Okay, moving on to item 1.2, Pledge of Allegiance. If I can get everybody to stand, please. And repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, moving on to item 1.3, Meeting Practices and Information. The members of the public may observe the meeting via the NUSD YouTube channel or in-person at the NUSD boardroom. Spanish translation will be available in person. Regarding public comment, the public will have the opportunity to address the Board of Education regarding non-agendized matters and agendized items by email at publiccomment@newarkunified.org, or in-person comments by submitting a speaker card with the executive assistant. And with that, we're going to move on to item two, which is new board member swearing-in ceremony. And actually, before we start that, because I might have jumped the gun. So Ms. Lemus, because I didn't ask you whether you were ready. Were you able to activate YouTube and all that other stuff? I mean, we're all live, right?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Okay, so we're ready to move on to item two, New Board Member Swearing-In Ceremony. And I will hand this over to the superintendent.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. This is a very special evening for the Newark Unified School District. I want to thank everyone for coming out here this evening to celebrate our new elected officials that will be assuming office this evening. We have three people that went through the election process, won the election, and we are delighted to welcome them to being part of our Newark Unified School District Board of Education. The following names: Aiden Hill, who has served prior, is doing another four-year term. Austin Block will be joining us. Gabriel Engiano Jr. will be joining us. And I'm going to step down off the dais. They do have some special guests that will be helping to swear them in this evening. And I'd also like to give them an opportunity, after everybody swears in, just to be able to just make a couple of comments. In the next words, we'd like to invite you to join us for a celebration here in the boardroom. So with that, I'm going to step down and ask Austin Block and his guests to please join me. Have you been right here in the microphone? You could join over here. And then Austin is going to, or you repeat after you.
Okay. Him, not me. Or me. So for the Office of Newark Unified School Board, wait, did I say that part? So I, Austin Block...
I, Austin Block.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of California...
And the Constitution of the State of California...
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic...
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance...
That I will bear true faith and allegiance...
To the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California...
To the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California...
That I take this obligation freely...
That I take this obligation freely...
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion...
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion...
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties...
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties...
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Gabriel Engiano Jr., come join us, and your special guest. Could you please introduce your guest for us?
So my daughter, Dustin Engiano, and she'll be reading and swearing me in.
I, Gabriel Engiano Jr., do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
It's hard to follow.
Do it in pieces.
Please. I, Gabriel Engiano Jr., do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic. That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution and of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
That I will take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. Thank you.
And then our last new member will be Member Aiden Hill. And Aiden, would you like to invite your guest to come forward?
We are not here yet. So let me, can I make an explanation? Can we share something? So everybody, thank you for coming. And my students that I teach during the day, they are on their way. I was hopefully going to have them swear me in, but it looks like they are stuck in traffic. So we'll just have to introduce them when they come in. But instead, we will have our eminent superintendent walk me through the process. And by the way, there is a reason why I'm wearing a cowboy hat. I will explain that later.
Can you please raise your right hand?
And give it to me in pieces, please.
Here's your cheat sheet.
Yes, thank you.
I, Aiden Hill, do solemnly swear...
I, Aiden Hill, do solemnly swear...
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California...
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California...
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic...
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic...
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California...
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California...
That I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion...
That I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion...
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations. And our other two board members should come back and join us. Maybe please, who would join in?
One, two, three. And we'll take one this way. One, two, three.
Any more out there? Well, congratulations, everyone. Hi, do you have, or we can have you please sign your document here. And, because my question is to each of you. And I will use your guest to shut up.
Okay, yeah, okay. Can I introduce them?
You may.
Okay, all right, let's, we're going to do overtime, guys, come on up. Everybody, these are my students from Pugetina High School. So this is Prashant, and this is Cece, and this is Giang, and this is Sam. And I'm very proud of them, and I'm glad that they were able to come tonight. And we're going to have, why don't you guys come over here? And we'll have Sam read this, I'm sorry, Prashant will read this. But then why don't you guys stand right next to Prashant? So you stand right here. Do you have the cheat sheet, Tracy? Okay, we'll just do it.
No, you're on your own, you can power your practice.
So you should read this, but you should stand this way. Okay, and then you're going to read this, and then I'll repeat after it, but let's do it in chunks.
I...
Okay, so I, Aiden Hill...
I, Aiden Hill, solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
That I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
And I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Okay, all right, thank you.
At this time, I'd like to welcome Mayor Hannon to the platform.
Thank you very much. I apologize for looking less maorial tonight. I only received a notification of this great opportunity about five minutes before six. So I rushed down here after walking my two dogs around the neighborhood. As Mr. Hill knows, he sees me. But I wanted to take an opportunity to, one, thank former board member Nguyen and former board member Plankarti for their outstanding service to our community. I had the opportunity, as I always do, listen to the school board meetings and heard their closing comments as they were leaving the board. And I thought that their points that they made in terms of focusing on really what is our primary responsibility as a community, but the education and the quality of the education for our children. Excited about Mr. Block and Gabriel, I apologize, I didn't want to butcher your last name. And Mr. Hill being re-elected, I'm really excited about these new members of the board. I think we're turning a page, starting a new chapter, where again, this board is going to focus in really on what's most important to our community, the quality of the education for our children. We had a swearing-in ceremony at City Hall last week. We welcomed three new council members to the city council. So working in collaboration with the school board, I'm excited about the partnership that we've established. As I heard from the community, as others have heard, as I campaigned this last year, schools are very important to our community. As we talked about, a vibrant business community, quality housing and affordable housing, schools are right there at the top of the list that folks are concerned about. So I'm happy to be here as the mayor. I'm happy to work in collaboration with the school board. I look forward to working with the new president of the school board, Ms. Jones. And I think together, we're going to come up with a vision that's going to be beneficial to the community in its entirety. So thank you for the opportunity to say a few words. Thank you.
You know, on behalf of myself and my entire extended cabinet, I'm actually going to ask all of our principals and directors to please stand. Thank you for being here this evening. Thank you to the executive cabinet for being here this evening. We really do look forward to working with you as part of a team, to be able to work and focus in on what's best for our students. And we just want to be able to welcome you and thank you so much for your service that you're about to give. With that, I'd like to ask everybody to please join us for a reception here this evening. Our board meeting will commence at 7:00 PM.
We're going to go to item number three, approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I move that we approve the agenda.
I'll second.
Member Thomas moves, Vice President Jones second. And are we going to do this, well, actually, we can't do it through board docs yet, so we're just going to do roll call, right? Go ahead.
Correct. Student Board Member Lee, how do you vote?
Yes.
Member Thomas?
Yes.
Member Agriano?
Yes.
Member Block?
Yes.
Vice President Jones?
Yes.
President Hill?
Yes. Great. Motion carries. So, moving on to item four, public comment. First, we're going to talk about public comment on non-agenda items, 4.1. And on 4.1, we have Ms. Sheri Villa. Well, actually, before we have Ms. Villa come up, do we have anybody that submitted an email comment?
No, we do not have any public.
Okay, great. Okay, so Ms. Villa, welcome.
There was no employee update on the agenda today, so I had to speak in very private room. I hope that's okay. Board Member Hill, school board members, Executive Cabinet, good evening. Officially to introduce myself to our new board members, welcome, Board Member Agriano, I hope I'm saying that right, and Board Member Block. On behalf of NTA, welcome to, I don't say welcome in Danish, but welcome to, yeah, oh. So, we look forward to a positive, working relationship, as I always like to have, or I strive to have with the board members. So, I will be passing on my contact info, and we'll be happy to meet both of you each other to have started working relationships. So, welcome again on behalf of NTA. On the similar note, I'm going to keep it short, two other members of our NTA family that I just wanted to give recognition to. First is one of our NTA teachers, Julie Del Cartacio. She was just recently elected to our Newark City Council, so.
[applause]
So, if you're listening, Councilwoman Del Cartacio, you got a full support of NTA. And another one of our NTA family members, Mr. Pat Erby. He's interim principal at BGP right now, is being sworn in tonight at the New Haven School Board as one of their newest elected members, so.
[applause]
And before the repositioning, I guess you'd call that, of board members, Board President Hill, congratulations on being elected again. You have full support of NTA, and I'm going to use your words, we look forward to doing good things. And to our upcoming Board President, and Board President Kathryn Jones, you were one of us, you'll always be an NTA member, so, again, very excited to be working with all of you. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Villa. We also have 4.1, public comments on non-agenda items, Mr. Foster.
Excuse me for reading, but I'm under the time clock, so I have to be very careful. Thank you, President Hill, and members of the board. I was thrilled to see at last week's meeting your recognition of sixth grader Juliana Garcia for her academic achievements, who in 20 months rose from third to sixth grade level in math and reading. She said that she achieved grade level through hard work and strict teachers. I hope that you can replicate whatever worked for her with the rest of the student body to bring up everybody else's scores there. At the high school level, I would also, that would also mean getting rid of Apex to improve scores. That's your online learning program. I first advised the board on June 3, 2021, that Apex undermines teacher authority and allows school students to falsely earn semester credits in just weeks or as little as one day. For my comments, the prior administration, not you guys, unfairly and maliciously attacked me and put my teaching me and put my teaching credential in jeopardy. I want to thank Member Hill for his heartfelt apology last month about my disrespectful treatment. As my attorney noted, she had never seen a school board member issue an apology such as that. Of course, I will fully support your call for a truly independent investigation of Apex, and I will voluntarily provide to the district all of my evidence. Also, I wanted to recognize Member Thomas, who reminded me last month in a lengthy phone call that she has been working diligently behind the scenes for years to champion my cause, so I know I can count on your support as well. To new Member Block, I will remind you that you asserted to me online that you are independent from the failed slate, and now is your opportunity to prove that independence and show support for Apex, I'm sorry, support for an investigation into Apex. I've been gone from Newark for over two years, so Apex's implementation might have changed since I left. However, upon, when I attended last June's high school graduation to see the last of my students graduate, I came upon a cluster of teachers who were remarking that a number of students should not have walked the stage because they had failed their course. That suggests that the problems with Apex are still alive. The last two election cycles sent a clear message from the voters that they rejected the prior administration's lies, even when couched in positive uplifting words. Parents are smart enough to know that NUSD's academic performance has been horrific for a decade, and they want the truth so that they can fix the problem. They want their children to succeed, like Juliana, beyond high school. They know that a high-performing school district creates intergenerational wealth from rising property values. No one from the district has yet asked for, nor allowed me to show my evidence supporting my claims about Apex. Your superintendent indicated in a prior meeting that she was going to conduct an investigation, and I look forward to working with her. Your second greatest impediment to achieving academic success, at least at the high school, is with cellphone use. Given the state's mandate to create a new cellphone policy, you have a wonderful opportunity to fix that problem. I would suggest that you read this book, The Anxious Generation, which was published just this year, that provides all the scientific and methodological longitudinal studies that you need to learn all about how phones are ruining this generation. In fact, I would recommend that you have this book assigned to all high school health and PE classes, instead of wasting their time on character strong. Thank you for probably a little over my three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Foster. Okay, moving on to item 7.3, or no, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. We have one more. So, Ms. Leslie Wong, for non-agenda items.
Thank you for allowing me to speak, and welcome, school board members. We're all here to ensure our children have the best education possible. To do so, we need to respect freedom of speech. Each of you brings a unique perspective and experiences to the table, and they are invaluable to shaping policies that best serve our students and community. By respecting one another's rights to express differing viewpoints, you're upholding democratic values, and you are modeling for our children the importance of open dialogue and mutual respect. Encourage debate, listen actively, and consider all voices. Through this diversity of thought, we can find the best, balanced, and effective solutions. While we may not always agree, respecting each other's freedom of speech is essential for collective growth and understanding. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wong. Okay, and finally, Ms. Parks, 7.3. Do you want to speak now, or do you want to wait? Okay.
Welcome to the new members. I wanted to request that you pull this item, there were no minutes attached to the agenda. Thank you. I believe there's a link. There should be a live link on there.
Yeah. Not on our copy. It might be something that you see in yours, but not on the public copy.
We will pull that item. We, actually, we're trying to do something at the recommendation of CSBA.
Okay.
It's interesting. We tried it.
Okay, all right. When we get to that item, we'll look at it. Okay? All right. So, moving on to topic five, annual organization of the Board of Education. And so, we're now going to go through a process of electing both our officers for the year, as well as who will be serving on various committees. And so, we will just take this one at a time, and at some point, we will probably do some rotation of seats to acknowledge the new positions. So, without further ado, item 5.1, election of officers the president. So, the recommendation is that the Board of Education approves the nomination of the new board president. So, the way that we've done this in the past, we've had changes, but I believe, I believe at this point, even though we've informally talked about this being a rotation, I believe that it is still an election at this point.
It's always unlikely to leave this.
Yeah. So, at this point, we could talk about, I mean, I would like to suggest that we have Vice President Jones come into the role of president. She has been serving as vice president for the past year, and has learned all of the details behind the scenes. She's attended every single agenda-setting meeting and a number of other meetings, and so I think that she has all the requisite experience, and has also weathered a variety of storms. So, I would recommend that we promote her to president, but would like to open it up to the Board if there's any additional thoughts on this topic.
I'll second that nomination.
Okay. All right. So, I guess I made the motion, and Member Thomas seconded, and so, and we're going to do a roll call vote?
Yes.
Yes, she can vote. Yes, she can vote.
Student Board Member Lee, how do you vote?
Yes.
Member Thomas?
Yes.
Member Agüiano?
Yes.
Member Block?
Yes.
Vice President Jones?
I accept.
President Hill?
Yes. Okay. Motion carries. And so, at this point, we're going to play musical chairs, so.
Yeah, maybe we wait until we've done all of them.
Okay, sure. Okay. So, then, let's go on to Vice President. So, again, usually, we do it kind of based on a rotation, and so, for the rotation, it would be Member Thomas that would be up. Are there any, I mean, do we feel, does everybody feel comfortable with that?
Actually, it's a roll call vote for the first one. It's two different items.
For the Vice President?
No, for the President. They're each a separate item.
Yeah. So, we just did the vote for President.
Then President Jones takes over.
Also, we do need to switch chairs right now.
Okay.
So, I was just thinking.
Okay. So.
Sorry.
That's okay. All right. So then, I will just stand here. Until somebody tells me, until somebody tells me where I need to sit.
I think she can do it right there from her location.
Okay. So, go ahead.
We'll make the news next year.
Yes, go ahead.
So, at this point, as Member Hill just suggested, oh, boy. Yeah, no kidding. I might get my fingers, mash my finger in there. The nomination to have Nancy, or, excuse me, Member Thomas, become Vice President next, are there any comments from any of the board members?
I'll second.
Okay. Just, okay, so when it's up like that, then it's working. When you push it down, it's lower, and so then it's off. So, it's an on and off. Now, it's on.
Okay, cool. Then I'll second.
Okay, so, Nancy, wait.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I moved. I motioned, and Member Block, second. And can you do a roll call vote, please?
Student Board Member Lee, how do you vote?
Yes.
Member Thomas?
Yes.
Member Agüiano?
Yes.
Member Block?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes.
Member Hill?
Yes.
Six eyes?
Would be six yeses. Motion carries. Okay. Moving on, then, I think at this point, shall we do the shuffle of our seats?
You may. It's your call.
All right. So, yes, let's shuffle our seats, which means you two get to stay, and the other three of us get to play during service.
Great.
I'll miss you.
I know.
Separation anxiety.
Or new role anxiety. Here, sir. Oh, my gosh, was it? How like your outfit today?
And there's a reason behind it. I mean, it's one of the reasons why we're in public comment, but my grandpa, he was kind of a.
All right. Is everybody settled in? Sort of?
I'm not waiting.
All right. So, you all have to bear with me as I attempt to go through this. Appointment of Superintendent as Secretary of the Governing Board. Do I need to say anything, or is it just a motion and second?
Just a.
Any comments from the Board on this? All right. Someone like to make a motion to accept the Superintendent as Secretary of the Board, Governing Board?
I move that we. I move that we appoint the Superintendent as Secretary to the Board.
Someone second?
I second.
Roll call, please. Student Board Member Lee, how do you vote?
Yes.
Member Hill?
Yes.
Member Agüiano?
Yes.
Member Block?
Yes.
Vice President Thomas?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes.
Six eyes.
All right. So, six eyes, motion passes. Congrats, Superintendent. And, okay, the next item on the agenda is to go over the dates for the 25-26 year. Well, actually, it's 20, it's just 25, isn't it? Just all of 25.
All of 25.
All of 25. Okay. So, I believe that it was passed out, there was a list of the proposed meeting dates and study sessions. One of the things that we, sorry, one of the things that Superintendent Bakar and I talked about prior to the meeting was, we went through and found dates, looking for dates, sticking with our Tuesdays as in first and third weeks of the month. And we would like to propose that we move to one regular board meeting a month, which would be in the first week, and a study session in the third week. This would give us the opportunity to have bigger, have a presentation, something presented to us, and then that we can have a real dialogue about whatever that report is, whether it's an interim, or LCAP, or whatever it is that's coming forward at the time. And we will make suggestions as to what would happen in those study sessions each month. So, this is something different than what we have done in the past. We've usually had the two board meetings and had not as much opportunity to have the study sessions. So, the dates that are listed here, in January, we would start with the third Tuesday of the month, and it would be a regular board meeting, since there is no first Tuesday in the month that we would be meeting. And then, moving after that for February, March, April, May, and June, those, the first meetings would all be school board meetings, or regular board meetings, and there would be a study session as the third week of those. In June, the proposal is to have two regular board meetings, because we have a number of things to finish up. We also have the interim, is it the interim?
You actually have, you have the budgets.
We have the budget.
You have the draft budget and draft LCAP.
Yeah.
So, that could send the first meeting in June, and the second meeting would be the actual vote, to be able to bring that forward. There are both public hearings.
And those, we are proposing that they are the second and fourth Tuesdays, to give a little bit more, to give a little more time. It alleviates coming back right after Memorial Day weekend and all of the end-of-school activities, so it gives a little bit of a breather there. And then, moving for the next, the 25-26 school year, the regular board meetings, again, the first Tuesdays for August, September, October, and those three would be, the first Tuesday was the regular board meeting, and the third Tuesday being study sessions. Moving into November and December, we would have one board meeting, one regular board meeting for each of those. In Tuesday, it would be the third Tuesday on the 18th, and then, December 11th, the Thursday could be the organizational meeting. At that time, we would also be doing budget at that time, I believe. Yes, President, or, Member Hill?
So, thank you, President Jones. So, it sounds like you've taken the calendar, and you've identified any other potential dates where there might be conflicts, and you've made sure that we don't have a conflict, right?
We have done, we've really tried to do that.
So, there's no conflict with spring break, there's no conflict with, and it looks like from our May and June meetings, that we don't have any conflict with the graduations. And then, I'm imagining, given that you've got Thursday, December 11th, that there shouldn't be any conflict with CSBA.
Correct. We looked at that as well.
Okay. Okay.
And we also looked at the fact that you have to have the first interim report done by the 15th in Simonton County.
Right. Okay.
Just a couple of comments real fast, if I could. With the study session, it's possible that there may be an occasional agenda item that you would also have, is a possibility that we would have to go off and notice. Sometimes, we have some timely things that we have to fiduciary do on behalf of the district. For instance, if we have an expulsion, they have to be heard by the Board within 10 days of the actual expulsion hearing, right? So, we want to make sure that we can time that if we need to. It's also possible that you might have a closed session, either before the study session or after the study session, if there is a matter that we really need to bring to your attention and make sure that you were informed.
Any questions?
I have a question about June, May and June, because we start out with May 6 as a regular meeting, and then, we don't have the, we don't have the public hearings for the budget or the, or the LCAP until June 10, I assume, right?
That's correct.
So, that's a long, long time between, plus, those are when school's already out of session, so people that might have otherwise be interested may not, you know, be available. I'm just wondering what the thinking was at.
Those have been the standard times of when we've been doing the LCAP and the budget adoptions. It actually follows the last three cycles that we've had here in the district.
So, you mean, we didn't have, we didn't have a public hearing in May?
No, you did not. You've always done them in June.
Okay.
As a matter of fact, it actually makes sense, because your May revise doesn't come out until about May 15.
Yeah.
So, if you think about the May revise, and the fact that you might have some slight adjustments that you're making to your budget, the LCAP committee actually would have already done most of their work already, and you would have already had a preliminary look at the LCAP through a presentation that would happen possibly in May. So, you would have some ideas to what that looks like, and then, you actually do your public hearing, and then your final adoption in June.
Okay. My only concern is, or maybe it's more of a suggestion, is that we develop a board calendar that has these, the subjects of these study sessions mapped out for the year, because we have, we have a lot of, you know, issues that we've asked for a deeper dive into. And I worry that if we don't have a board calendar that captures. And I worry that if, if we don't have a board calendar that captures the reports and discussions that we've already asked for, that I'd like to see them in a board calendar.
Board Member Thomas, we've actually been keeping your running list, and I want to thank Toya for helping and going back and actually looking at some prior board meetings and making sure that we've captured. I think what we'll be doing is we will be sharing a survey, and then there's a couple of natural things that we do want to be able to share with the board, that would be timely to some of the work that we have to do as well, to make sure that you're informed, or there might be a special hearing that you need to hear about, and for a deep dive into the study session with regards to either academic achievement, it could be a financial report that might be coming forward that we think you might need to have more information on. So I think we can go back and take a look at those. We'll work very closely with both the President and the Vice President as we sit there and try to cycle those out and identify them. That way, staff has time to be able to prepare.
So will we be having a board calendar published for the year that? No?
The dates will be published. I don't know that we're going to have all the different items necessarily published. We're going to go back and go take a look at our cycle. I want to be able to work with staff, and we'd like to be able to make some recommendations based on the work that we have to do, and then also some of the other things that you've asked.
Because the board calendar itself covers items that are in the regular meetings as well? The one that CSBA recommends?
Okay. We did, we did talk about that. All right. Yes?
For the study sessions, will there be public comments allowed?
Always.
Okay.
So any other comments before we, before I ask for a motion?
The only other comment I wanted to make is that many boards do have just one regular meeting a month, and, and it seems to work, so. And I think we have been remiss in having deep dives into some of the issues that we really need to discuss, so I like this, I like this method.
Great. Can I ask for a motion?
I'll motion to approve, do I have to say the name?
Proposed date, meeting dates?
To set regular meeting dates for 2025, 2026, Agenda Item 5.4.
I'll get a second.
I'll second.
Student Member Lee makes the motion, and Member Block, seconds? And can we have a roll call vote, please? Member Lee?
Yes.
Member Hill?
Yay.
Member Anguiano?
Yes.
Member Block?
Yes.
Vice President, Thomas?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes.
Six eyes. Motion carries, thank you. All right, so the next item is 5.5, setting of the regular meeting times. It is recommended that the Board of Education, regular meetings start at 6:00 for closed session, and 7:00 PM for open session, and commence by 10:00. Study sessions will begin at 6:00, and if the closed session is necessary, then this can be scheduled either prior or after the 6 o'clock study session. Any comment from the board? All right, may I have a motion, please?
I move to approve 5.5, set regular meeting times.
I'll second that.
Okay. Member Hill, motions. Vice President, Thomas, seconds. May I have a roll call vote? Student Board Member, Lee?
Yes.
Member Hill?
Yes.
Member Anguiano?
Yes.
Member Block?
Yes.
Vice President, Thomas?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes.
Six eyes. Motion carries. How are you two doing? It's a lot to take in. All right. Okay, moving to, I believe that was 5.6. Oh, 5.6, I'm on 5.6. Okay, appointment of Board Member Representative to serve on the Audit Committee for two years. So right now, we are moving into the section that goes through and talks about each one of the committees. And, so I'm just going to give a little bit of background on each of these. And I know that some of us are more familiar with others than what the different committees are, but it would be, I believe when we were looking at this, it's, we need to each sign up for three, possibly four committees.
And that includes alternates?
Yes, that includes alternates, yes, excuse me. There are, I'm going to go back and look at my other list. There are, I'm looking at the number of committees that we have. One, two, three, four, five, six, is it seven committees? I thought we had nine.
I took two off until we can bring those back for a bigger board discussion, because the one was for the CBAC?
No, that one's on here. It's on, we've got audit, like, may I?
Yeah.
Just read the different committees. There's the Audit Committee, the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee, there's a representative to the city of Newark, so it's a Newark liaison, yeah, I was getting there, NUSD City Liaison Committee, there's an LCAP Advisory Committee, we have a Newark Teacher Induction Advisory Council, we have Mission Valley ROP Governing Council, and we have the Regional Policy Board of Arselpa. So those are the different committees that we're looking at tonight. So, has everyone had a chance to kind of look at them and think about it? Okay, great.
I do have one que, question.
Yeah.
President Jones, and it's just because my, my memory is failing me. So for the Audit Committee, has it always been a two-year term?
I believe, I believe it's a, a one-year term for the, the board members, but a two-year term for the non-voting, the, the third community member.
Yes, yeah, because it, because it says two-year term, but I thi, I think it's one year unless there's something different in the bylaws.
I believe it's one year.
Can I just ask a question on that? And I had to go back and go look at the bylaws, but I thought, what I had understood from the committee is that one board member stays on for historical information and rotates off, right? Like, so, would it not be two years? Am I incorrect on that? Was there, was that strictly for the, for the voting members that come from the community?
Yeah, and I don't think it's ever been like that. I think what's happened, though, is that the Board President is precluded from being on it, so there's been a shift.
A shift that happens with it?
Yeah, because, because of Member Jones, President Jones cannot be on it.
Okay, I thought I read in their bylaws that it was a, a two-year term, so maybe...
It is a two-year term for the third member.
So for the pub, for the public member.
Got it?
Yeah.
Although I have to say, it does make sense that one board member does stay on for two years, so that there is that continuity from a board standpoint, so.
Yeah.
But I did not look at the policy itself, the board, bylaw itself.
Yeah, I'd just like to make a recommendation that, because I do think that our bylaws say it's one year, but I agree that we need to have continuity, right? It's a really important position, and so I think that if, that we ought to always consider people who are already on there, whether it maybe makes sense for them to continue for at least another term. And then if we decide that we want to extend that to be an official two-year term, we could have that be a, a future agenda item. But, but at least for now, just, because I'm pretty sure that our bylaws say one year. But as Member Thomas is saying, if you're the public member, that's a two-year term.
Yes, that is, I, I do know that for sure. All right, so, yes.
For the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee, Measure O, if it's poss, if there's no students on it, is it possible for the student board member to also join that committee?
Per, per ed code, I believe that you can attend, I believe that you can attend any meeting.
Yeah. That, that would not be a problem at all.
I mean, you don't, you don't have a voting role, but you can, but you can attend.
Yeah, but attend and give, like, input.
I think so, so, at, at this point, there's nothing, it's closed session, so yeah, by all means, you could attend. So if it is okay with everyone, I, I'd like to just go through each one, and we can have a discussion at the time as to who would be interested in that position. And for that committee, I think it's really important that we all say what we'd like to do, and then we kind of discuss from there, even if all five of us wanted to be on the same committee, I think it's good to just express our feelings as to which, which ones we're, we're interested in. So the first one is 5.6, and that is the Audit Committee. So I will be, I've been on this committee, I will be stepping down, because I can't be on that and be Board President, so I guess I would open it up to the rest of you to say if you're interested in being on that committee.
I'm definitely interested in being on that committee.
Anyone else?
Just a clarification on times to become and be a part of the particular committee. What does it entail, the details on the timing?
It's usually, the meetings are quarterly, and they are at, they're like a 6 o'clock meeting, I believe, there's like 6:00 to 7:00, 7:30 at the latest. There are occasionally meetings that, that will go longer than that hour, but usually never longer than an hour and a half. There will be one in March for sure, I'd have to dive into my calendar and look at what the other ones are, but it's basically one a quarter.
I, I believe there's, there's one in January, isn't there? There's usually one before, with the auditor, before the audit report is brought.
I think it's in January. I could look at my phone if that is okay with you all, to look at those dates.
So with the Audit Committee, it's required to meet at least a minimum once per year, but they have a meeting on average quarterly, and if there's not business to be done in that meeting, sometimes it's canceled if there's not a quorum.
Yeah, I'm not seeing January. I know there's one in March. Apologize for not thinking about putting those future dates on here, on, on the agenda.
Well, actually, we probably don't have one scheduled for January because we had one in December, but the audit report wasn't ready for the Audit Committee to look at it.
I think we pushed to possibly have one in January.
We can, we can add, we can add one in January.
Normally, I know that they have to present their audit findings before the end of January, but because we had issues, it looks like that's been extended, so it doesn't sound like you're required to have a January meeting, so it sounds like you're going to do it in March, maybe, or whenever they're ready. And then, in my experience being on the Audit Committee, they usually, you have a meeting sometime in the March-April timeframe to work with the auditors, because they're going to start talking about a plan for what they're going to audit for that year, and so they'll want to review that with you. And then they'll go through and they'll start to do their audit in the summer, and then you're normally coming in towards the end of the summer to get their preliminary findings, so this is kind of the August timeframe. And then I believe that you meet with them like November?
November.
December, yeah.
I do, yeah, we did, I, now I'm kind of remembering, I believe it's a late January meeting, is what it is.
I don't think so. Not this year, because you guys have extended it because...
We've, yeah, we've extended, I think it goes into early February, maybe, and then the, the, then we meet again at the end of March. It's basically quarterly. Any other questions? I, I'm sorry, it's, I'm more vague on that than I wish I was.
But the hours are usually from 6:00 PM. They typically last about an hour long for the meeting.
Yeah, 6:00 to 7:00.
So in that case, I will consider to be a part of the Audit Committee. And also, just, just clarification, I just wanted to know the times and dates to be sure.
I believe it's usually Thursday meeting? Wednesday or Thursday? Now I have to go back and look, I'm sorry. We did not meet in November, did we?
Is he allowed a meeting on Wednesdays or Thursdays?
Jose, did we meet in November?
When did you last meet?
Yes.
We did, we did meet in November.
Your microphone.
I was trying to remember when the date.
That is correct, we did meet in November, and I can get you the date. President Jones?
Okay. I, so I was trying to remember if they're Wednesday or Thursday, I think they're Wednes, actually, they're Wednesdays.
I think they're Wednesdays.
They're Wednesdays.
President Jones, the last meeting we did have was Wednesday night, November 13th, at 6:00 PM.
So, yes, they, they fall on Wednesdays.
Thank you.
Okay. I have a question about how we want to go about doing this, because if we're all speaking, our, if, we're all saying these are the ones that we're interested in, and I don't know what's proper to do, so I look to the rest of you for this on, on handling this properly. But if we're going to be able to express which ones we're interested in, we can't really talk about it, make a vote, and then go to the next one, because maybe it would work out, you know, it might shuffle.
Yeah, I think going over each one...
And just saying who's interested first, and then we can go back and do the votes?
Yeah, I agree.
We'll, we'll try to make this quick so that it doesn't drag on forever. I guess we got an agreement on that one.
Yeah.
Okay, so, let's see, for Audit Committee, Nancy, I'm sorry, Member Thomas? Is that correct?
I'm interested.
Okay, and...
Gabriel.
And Member Aguiano, is it, is it Aguiano?
Anguiano.
Anguiano, okay, thank you, I will do my best. Anguiano, anyone else interested in audit? Okay. Well, seeing as it takes two members, and we've only got two people that are interested, I think we can do the vote, so.
I'll make a motion to nominate Members Thomas and Anguiano for the Audit Committee.
Perfect.
I second.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Okay, so, motion from Member Block and a second from Member Hill. And could we have a roll call vote, please? Yes. Student Board Member, Lee, how do you vote?
Yes.
Member Hill?
Yes.
Member Anguiano?
Yes.
Member Block?
Yes.
Vice President?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes.
Six eyes. Motion carries. All right. So we move on to the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee. This one... Let's see.
So the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee is just about done. This was the committee that worked on identifying some of the stakeholder input that, you know, came with doing the bond, and, so there shouldn't be too many more meetings left, I wouldn't think, I mean, so it's going to be a very short-lived meeting because, once, I think, so this is a group that works with the fundraising arm and some other stuff that's happening with, you know, community input, since Measure O passed, this will be a relatively quick committee piece, and...
So, so we're not going to, we're not going to need this for Measure O?
So Measure O, no, you're not going to need this for Measure O.
Oh. Is there my...
This is the one that Fong and Plan Carte...
Oh, I thought...
...served on, I thought.
I thought this what had to do with moving forward... With the community, with a committee, that is a community committee.
Yeah, the, the Fong, Fong and, they were, they were really responsible for the...
You're right, I'm sorry, this, this is for Measure O, you're right, this, this is the actual Citizens Bond Oversight Committee. My apologies.
That's okay.
I have a question about this, is, is, are these board representatives voting members? Or are they just...
No, they would, they would, Vice President, it would be pretty much like...
No, they would, Vice President, it would be pretty much like ad hoc committee that they would sit in for these meetings, but the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee would run the meeting. As a CBO, I would sit into those meetings, help coordinate space for them, and give them updates, fiscal updates, construction updates on the projects. I would also say that the last bond that we did have was the G measure that we want to close up. We do have two members currently, and given that, if we keep them with this current measure open, we would have one of our members that's been sitting in for quite a while, only two more years. But if we close up that Measure G completely, they would have an opportunity to continue on the CBOC Committee for the next six years. And I think consistency and continuity for these two current members in the community would be ideal moving forward. Typically, we have, we definitely want a quorum, so we'd have five or more into this committee. And so having two that are seasoned and senior would assist in moving forward and teaching them some of the processes and procedures.
So with that, are there, I'd like to hear from everyone if they're interested in being part of that committee. So it's two non-voting members. It's, I see it as a liaison, kind of a liaison role.
Absolutely. If I may clarify, they do bring this back to the Board, they can have a voice piece of what's going on, just like they go to a school site or an event, they actually bring back information that was passed along to these committee members. And so they also give their input and see what's going on within, that also helps the committee.
Yes.
I would be interested, but like in addition to the other board members, because I'm not going to be on the, I'm not going to be able to be on there for a year.
Right. Okay. Okay. Yeah, let's move on, and the next one is the City of Newark and the NUSD Liaison Committee. Personally, that is a committee I would really like to be a part of, but I'm interested in hearing from the rest of you.
Yeah, and I'm currently on it, and I would like to stay if people agree, just from a continuity perspective.
Anyone else interested?
That was one that I'd expressed interest in, but given that we haven't heard a lot from participation in the Bond Committee, I'd be willing to sign up for the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee rather than the City Liaison one.
Okay. Thank you. Any other, anybody else? All right, so moving on to the.
By the way, we forgot to do this with Audit One, but we should have an alternate for each of these, we should have an alternate for each of these positions.
Yes, this is, this is true.
So Member Block could be an alternate for the Liaison Committee.
Okay.
And do we, does anybody else want to be the alternate for the Audit Committee?
I'm not sure the bylaws call for an alternate.
We had an alternate before.
We did have an alternate before.
I don't mind if we need one.
Okay. Hang on, just a half a second. I'm sorry. I'm trying to write and think at the same time, it's not working out for me tonight.
So for the Audit Committee, we have, Member Thomas will remain on the committee. Member Anguiano, did I say it right? Member Anguiano is going to be newly joining the Audit Committee.
Right.
And Member Block is going to be the alternate.
Thank you.
And you actually took a vote already on that, so you'd have to go back and re-motion to add an alternate.
Okay, so I re-motion to add an alternate to the Audit Committee? Can I get a second?
I second that.
So we'll have to do this ad hoc.
Ms. Lee, Ms. May, we have a roll call vote again on that. Thank you. I'll try not to.
Student Board Member, Lee?
Yes.
Member Hill?
Yes.
Member Anguiano?
Yes.
Member Block?
Yes.
Vice President Thomas?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes.
Six eyes.
Motion carries to add the alternate. Okay, thank you.
And I'd like to make a motion for 5.6, because we didn't make a motion for it, right? For Measure O? Did we make?
For the Citizens Bond Committee, we didn't actually, we need, is that one person? It's two people, so right now.
I'm sorry, 5.7.
Member Block and we need one more for that. Student Member Lee would like to be on that, but she would not be part of that.
I think if it's not a voting position, it's not a problem. It's only, it's only right if it needs to be voting, but if it's not voting.
Right. But the recommendation is to put, have two school board members on.
And, okay.
And, and Member Lee.
Okay.
So we have Member Block who's interested. Anyone else interested in the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee?
I might be interested.
All right.
Put me down as a question mark.
Okay.
Depending on what else comes up that I might want to.
All right. Sounds good. So we're not taking a vote at this time on 5.7, which is the Citizens Bond Committee. The Liaison, we have three people, two members and an alternate, if that is okay with everyone. That would be myself and Member Hill as the members and Member Block as the alternate. So if that is okay with everyone, we can take a vote on that at this point, so I would entertain a motion.
If someone would like to step in as the alternate for that one, I'm a little cautious about overburdening myself, so if I'm going to be all the alternate on the Audit Committee, I'm a little hesitant to take on another alternate role. If someone else would like to take that on, otherwise, I'm okay.
It's safer to take on two alternate roles than it is to take on a member role, to be honest with you.
Yeah. You're rarely, you're rarely called as an alternate.
Yeah, you're rarely called as an alternate. So you would, you would probably be okay, but yes, I will put it down at question mark at this point, and we won't make a final vote yet. Because we're all looking at two positions, two committees that you're a member and at least one that you're an alternate for. It's kind of, if we think about it that way, it should help. All right, so the next one is the LCAP Advisory Committee. That is one that I am also very interested in serving on as a member if there are, and would like to hear from other people about that.
And is the Board, are we just, we don't, we don't vote, right?
No, it's just, it's just attending, bringing back information to the Board.
And how often does it meet?
It meets like five or six times a year. It gets a little heavy in the spring.
Currently, there's three meetings scheduled.
Okay. I'd be willing to serve on that, I haven't served on that before.
I also have interest in the LCAP Committee.
Okay.
The LCAP Committee meeting does often though meet late afternoon, correct, Karen?
Usually it's a 5:00 to 6:30.
Can you attend via Zoom?
Just to give you a heads up.
Can you attend via Zoom?
Currently, no.
So this is actually a Brown Act committee?
Okay, what day is it?
What was that?
What day is it?
What day of the week is the meeting?
I think they're on Thursday, the first one was January 9th.
Okay, then I'll have to bow out. I can't get over here that quickly.
If you need, I might be willing to be.
Well, I'm, I'm very interested in.
Oh, then what you do?
Okay. We do need an alternate. Do you want to?
I'll give you the alternate.
Just a clarification, can you have two alternates for that, or is it something that, just in case if Mr. Hill cannot attend?
I don't think we've ever, we haven't really had an issue with it, but.
It's strictly advisory, so I don't know that there's a problem with that, I mean.
I mean, I don't see why we couldn't. I really don't.
Why don't I remove myself then from consideration? I can take on another one and then open up a spot. That's fine with me.
But we're speaking our piece right now, so say what you're interested in and then.
So we just say what we're interested in.
Yeah, so you're interested in being an alternate also, potentially?
Correct.
Okay, but not a member.
That is correct, President Jones.
Okay. Okay, the next committee is for Teacher Induction Advisory Council, and you had a little, do we want, we want this for sure? We're not sure what's happening? We, do you have any advice on 510?
I do. I got to, Ms. Leonore, and we will need to have this, they are supposed to have one meeting, although I found out last year they did not have a meeting.
That's not true.
But, so this is definitely one that we would need.
That's not true.
There was a meeting?
Yeah.
Last January?
Yeah, I was in it.
Oh. Okay, I heard something different, so, yeah, it does meet the once a year typically. And this year, there might be a reason to meet too, if we make a shift in our induction program and move either with one of the county offices to help support us.
Okay. So that's one that really is, I mean, you're meeting once, maybe twice.
That's not meetings are quarterly.
What's that?
That's when meetings are quarterly.
They can be quarterly, but quite often they're canceled because there's not really an action item that needs to be done.
So we have.
And I'm, I'm willing to sign up for that if nobody else is interested.
Okay. And that's, that is just one member.
Member Block, are you interested?
Yeah, I'm interested as well.
Okay. All right.
And is that, is that just for one member, right?
Right.
So, so I don't have a preference on this, Member Block, so if you want to be the lead and you want to have me be the alternate, that's fine, or vice versa, whatever works for you.
Okay.
I think this is one that I was, I was pretty enthusiastic about, so I'd appreciate the chance.
Okay, I'll be the alternate.
Thanks.
Okay. So the next one to think about is the Mission Valley ROP Governing Council, and that one meets, I believe, is it quarterly? Bimonthly?
Monthly.
Oh, monthly, okay. That one is a monthly meeting. Do we have any information on what time that meeting?
It's at 3:30 in the afternoon on Thursdays.
Oh, yeah, and there's a long, there's a list of the dates there.
Can you do it through Zoom?
No. I say that, it's never been done.
Yeah, it's actually another Brown Act committee, and so it actually has restrictions, and because there's a vote that goes with it, it would be, just because you'd have to notice, whoever's there would have to publicly post their site that they're off, so.
Interested people in that one?
I've been on it a lot, and it's been a valuable experience. I'm willing to go, you know, have someone else be on it if they want to be.
I'd love the opportunity, but the timing is really, it's just a tough time, 3:30.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, then I'd like to be on it.
All right, and that is just one. We would need an alternate for that.
Day is it?
They, they're Thursdays also.
Thursday once a month, at 3:30.
Okay.
I could be alternate if need be. I could do that.
Okay.
All right.
Did you pass over the SELPA?
Nope, that's next. So SELPA is next. Those meetings are 3:30 to 5:00. I believe they're quarterly. 3:30 to 5:00 on a Tuesday.
Who was it?
I am. And I'm trying to remember what, it was either a first or a third Tuesday. Let me look. I wasn't able to make the last one, so I'm. Yes, it is a voting rule. It's one board member and it is a voting rule. I'm just looking to see if. What's that? No, it's 3:30 to 5:00. The meetings are 3:30 to 5:00. Trying to find where it was. I haven't figured out how to search yet. If I learned how to search, I'd be okay. Okay, SELPA meeting, 3:30, let's see, Tuesdays, it looks like third Tuesdays.
They're quarterly, right?
They're quarterly, yeah. March, June, September.
December. We just had one.
Yeah. Oh, right. And it is, it is a Tuesday, 3:30 to 5:00. Any interest in that one? In the SELPA? Okay, I have been on it. I can do it again, I just.
If it helps, I have the upcoming meeting dates in front of me.
Yeah, it's, it's March 25th, and then in June, it's the third.
It says June 10.
June 10, is it June 10th? Okay.
I think one of the challenges, President Jones, and we can't solve this right now, but I think that a lot of the times for these meetings, if you have a job, especially if you have a job that's not nearby, it becomes, and you can't attend via Zoom, it becomes problematic.
Yes.
And so that might be something, we're not going to solve it here, but that might be something that maybe whoever's the representative could bring up at these committees to say, is there a way that we could move these times so that we could have greater board participation?
Yeah. I mean, I'll, I'll continue with it. Just want to make sure I'm not overextending myself on the number that I've said yes to, that I'm looking at. So, let me just. Ms. Carr, what was the, what were the two that you took off? Because those are going to have to come back, and we're going to have to deal with those, so.
I don't know that I took anything off.
I thought we had nine when we were talking about this the other day.
I don't think so.
Okay. I must have been wrong.
If you didn't have them on your list, you leaned off your list there, I don't think that's.
Okay, that puts me at three with an alternate at four, but I think that was what I did last time. It just is a lot. All right, we did 5.6. We voted on that for Audit. We need to go back to Citizens Bond Oversight, and we need two for that, is that correct? We need two, and we have Block, Member Block and Member Thomas that are interested.
Yeah.
And.
We don't need an alternate. It's not a voting.
Yeah, I don't think we need an alternate. I think we can get away with that, an alternate for that. Okay, so, may I have a motion for? Okay, so, um, may I have a motion for 5.7, which is the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee? Currently, Member Block and Member Thomas are interested in being a part of that. Do I have a motion? If not, I'll make one. Um, I'd make a motion to, for Member Block and Member Thomas for this position.
I second.
Oh, let me add that, uh, Member Lee would like to attend for the rest of the school year, those meetings as well. Can I have a, a re-motion, sorry?
I'm for item 5.1, appointing.
Seven.
5.7, sorry, what am I saying? 5.7, Citizens Bond Oversight Committee, move that Member Block and Member Jones?
Thomas.
Thomas, I'm sorry, Member, Member Block and Member Thomas, with student member also in attendance, be appointed to the, this committee.
I'll second.
Perfect. All right, so Member Hill, motions, and Member, uh, Block, seconds. Could we have a roll call, please?
Student Board Member Lee, how do you vote?
Yes.
Member Hill?
Yes.
Member Anguiano?
Yes.
Member Block?
Yes.
Vice President Thomas?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes.
Six ayes.
Motion carries. Thank you. All right, I think we are ready to vote on 5.8, which is the Liaison Committee with the city. Um, with myself and Member Hill as members, and Member Block as the alternate. Could I get a motion for that, please?
I move that, um, Member Hill and President Jones be members for the Liaison Committee, and that Member Block be an alternate.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Okay, Member Thomas, motions, Member Hill, seconds. And a roll call vote when you're ready, Ms. Limas.
Student Board Member Lee?
Yes.
Member Hill?
Yes.
Member Anguiano?
Yes.
Anguiano. Member Block?
Yes.
Vice President Thomas?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes.
Six ayes.
Motion carries. Moving on to 5.9. Uh, which is the LCAP Advisory Committee. And the members, uh, member, myself and Member Block, um, with, uh, Member Aguiano or Member Hill as alternates.
Do you care about that one?
Is that still good with everyone?
Yeah.
Do you want to be the alternate for that one, for the LCAP? Okay.
So we just discussed, uh, just mentioning that I will be able to go on to the LCAP Committee instead of, uh, Member Block.
Okay.
That is correct.
Okay, so Member, uh, myself and, um, Member Aguiano as members with Member Hill as the alternate. Is that correct? Do I have it right now? All right, may I get a motion for that?
Motion to nominate, um, President Jones and Member Anguiano with, uh, Member Hill as an alternate, uh, for the LCAP Advisory Committee.
I second the motion.
Perfect, so Member Block, uh, motions, Member Angu, uh, Aguiano, uh, seconds. And may I have a roll call vote?
Student Board Member Lee, how do you vote?
Yes.
Member Hill?
Yes.
Member Aguiano?
Yes.
Member Block?
Yes.
Vice President Thomas?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes.
Six ayes.
Motion carries. Clarification, who was the second? Seconded the motion?
Yeah.
Anguiano did. I second the motion.
Thank you. I just didn't write it down my notes. I've got so many things crossed out.
I know, me too.
All right, moving on to the, um, Teacher Induction Advisory Council. We are, uh, the motion would recommend, uh, Member Block as the member and Member Hill as the alternate. That's still sounding, okay. May I ask for a motion for 5.10 then?
I move that Member Block be, um, on the.
Teacher induction.
Teacher induction panel, and Member Hill be the alternate.
I second that motion.
Okay, Member Thomas, motions. Member Aguiano, seconds.
Student Board Member Lee, how do you vote?
Yes.
Member Hill?
Yes.
Member Aguiano?
Yes.
Member Block?
Yes.
Vice President Thomas?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes.
Six ayes.
Motion carries. We are down to 5.11 for MVROP. Uh, the mo, uh, may I have a motion to, for Member Thomas to be the member, Member Jones being the alternate? President Jones, me, myself, and I.
Motion for, uh, Vice President Thomas as the representative for the MVROP Committee, and for, uh, President Jones as the alternate.
I'll second. Block motions. Jones, seconds. And when you're ready, a vote, please.
Student Board Member Lee, how do you vote?
Yes.
Member Hill?
Yes.
Member Aguiano?
Yes.
Member Block?
Yes.
Vice President Thomas?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes.
Six ayes.
Motion carries. Woo-hoo! All right, 5.12, I believe it's the last one. I'll make a motion that, that I run for the, that I take position.
I second that.
Short and sweet. Pres. Uh, no alternate. Oh, there should be an alternate for that one, but it's a 3:30 to 5:30. Or 3:30 to 5:00.
I could be the alternate.
Okay. Thomas will be the alternate. So, um, I'll change my motion for Member, President Jones as the member and Vice President Thomas as the alternate. And a vote when you're ready. Do we have a second? Oh, second, I'm sorry.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Student Board Member Lee, how do you vote?
Yes.
Member Hill?
Yes.
Member Aguiano?
Yes.
Member Block?
Yes.
Vice President Thomas?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes.
Six ayes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, we are at the Consent Agenda for Personnel Items. And we have 6.2, which is the Personnel Report. And may I have a motion for the Personnel Report?
President Jones, I don't, I don't want to presume, but I just remember that when I was a new board member, that I was still learning how a lot of this stuff worked. And so just in case you don't know, so there are certain items that they may not merit a lot of discussion, and so they get put under what's called the Consent Agenda, and there's an item for personnel, and then there's an item for non-personnel. And so we have the option to either just to approve the entire agenda, or if we want to pull certain items and discuss them, we can request to pull them. And in this situation, for personnel items, we only have one item, which is the Personnel Report. So the question is, do we want to just go ahead and approve this, or do we want to pull and discuss this?
So one of the things that you would do when you're looking at the agenda prior to the meeting is to go through and read whatever it is, and if you're good with it, you don't pull it. If you have questions that haven't been answered prior to the meeting, then you would ask to pull the item. So, looking at the Personnel Report, um, does anyone have a problem with it? Just go into motion.
I'm, I'm, unless, unless anybody wants to pull it, I move that we approve, um, item six, Consent Agenda Personnel Items.
I'll second.
Okay. Member Hill, motions. Member Block, seconds. For the 6.2, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes. Member Hill?
Yes.
Member Aguiano?
Yes.
Member Block?
Yes.
Vice President Thomas?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes.
Five ayes.
Motion carries. Okay, moving on to the Consent Agenda for Non-Personnel Items.
President Jones, um, staff would like to pull item number 7.3.
Okay.
Pull, pull to discuss or pull it from the agenda?
We're going to pull it from the agenda, although I show that it's still actively working. I'm concerned that a member of our public says that they're not enabled to access it. I'm not sure if it's because our server was down over the weekend and if that caused a hiccup, but I want to make sure that we, um, agendizes correctly and that the public's fully aware.
Okay.
All right, thank you. So we have, um, we're looking for a motion for 7.2, which is the mid-year revision, um, for the signature card.
I move to approve item 7.2, Signature Card Mid-Year Revision.
I'll second that.
All right. Member Hill, motions. Member Thomas, seconds. And a roll call vote when you're ready.
Student Board Member Lee, how do you vote?
Yes.
Member Hill?
Yes.
Member Anguiano?
Yes.
Member Block?
Yes.
Vice President Thomas?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes.
Six ayes.
Motion carries.
I believe on this item, I believe we're going to need, uh, signatures from our two newest board members as well to be on the signature card. So before you leave this evening, let's make sure we get your signature. Otherwise, Ms. Toya will be chasing you down.
Oh, yeah, you don't want that to happen. Okay, as we move on to 8.1, Board of Education Committee Reports, Announcements, Requests, Debriefs, and Discussion, this is your opportunity to say anything, if you would like to say anything. So we'll start with Member Lee.
Yeah, I just wanted to welcome you guys to the board. Um, I'm really excited to work with you two, and I'm excited to work with the rest of the board, um, in the next couple of months before I leave. But I was wondering if we were going to have a bio update on our website then?
We'll be working on those.
Could I add in my bio too?
You can.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, my goodness, it's not on it?
Yeah, it's not on there.
And I want to.
We're actually working on a lot of revisions with the entire website, so.
And I want to update mine too.
Thank you, Member Lee.
Yes, that's it, thank you.
Okay, Member Hill?
Great. So echoing Member Lee, just would like to welcome Members Block and Anguiano to the Board, and looking forward to working with you. And it's an exciting time where, where I think we're at a point in the district where we've got, um, a lot of things starting to, to bud and to bloom, and so it'll be great to work together and to see everything come to fruition. So that's first off. And then second off, I, I know that there were probably people that were wondering why I was dressed up as a cowboy today. And so part of it is because I found out that our superintendent loves cowboys. And, um, she's threatened, she's threatened to wear a cowboy hat too. So, but, but that's actually not the main reason.
I think they were cowboy boots, I was believing.
So the, the real reason actually is that my grandpa, who is no longer alive, he grew up at a time in our country when the, um, the, the Old West was transforming into modern society, and he grew up in Colorado, and he grew up on a ranch, and, and he was kind of a cowboy. And I'm actually wearing his bolo tie right now, um, that is of a, a cow skull, and I, I think probably made from cow bone or something, I'm not sure of the origin. But, um, but the reason why I wanted to honor my grandpa is that he, he grew up in a time, really when, uh, education, not everybody had access to education. I don't believe that he even graduated from high school, uh, certainly not college. And, um, but, but he, but he got an informal education, and he learned about the importance, well, he learned about, about our country's history, and he learned about the importance of civic participation. And, and I saw that in action when I was young, and when we, I, I used to live many years ago down in San Diego, and there was a little town right next to it. It's a big town now, but at that point, it was a little town called Poway, and at that point, it was just a little podunk town, but my grandpa and grandma had moved out there to be close to my parents. And my grandpa got very involved in local civic affairs, and, and some might say that he might have been the prototype for Miss Cindy Parks. And, and so he would regularly come to city council meetings, and he would, he was abreast of all of the issues, and he would come and speak on various issues. And, um, and he had a major impact, and at some point, uh, people had christened him Mr. Poway. And, um, and he really cared about being involved in, um, public affairs and, and believing that we're, we're graced with having a democracy and the ability for citizens to speak and to provide input. And, um, and he cared so much, he used to carry around little pocket Constitution books that he would hand out, and I still have some of those. And, um, and so I just, um, I wanted to, I'm sure that if he were alive today, that he would be just, um, proud as punch that I'm actually sitting up here, and so I just wanted to honor, um, his memory and his inspiration. And that's it for me, thank you.
Thank you for sharing that. That's really, uh, that's really touching, it's, um, it just shows, uh, the tradition, right? So first of all, I just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity, thank you for being present today. It's a really special occasion, um, for ourselves, and also, uh, the newly elected, and also, uh, the existing individuals that are here. Congratulations, President Jones, and also, uh, mentor Thomas. But just wanted to really just mention that I feel really honored to be able to represent the community, um, the students. Thank you, Joy, really appreciate your voice, and also your appearance, and being here means a lot. The community is really, um, special. It's near and dear to my heart, and, um, I'm willing to really be a part and just to listen, to listen, but also make the best decisions with, uh, my colleagues. But I just wanted to say thank you. And also to, um, Superintendent of Akar, really appreciate the, uh, the welcoming, and also just the embracing of this particular moment. And, uh, Ms. Limas, um, you do not go un, uh, Toya, really appreciate the time, and also the efforts of getting us on board and really being on top of things for us to re, really to be called and to be, uh, members of the Board. Thank you.
I'd like to echo, uh, what my fellow board members have already said, um, to thank everyone, staff, fellow board members, for the very warm welcome, uh, to all the family and community members who also came out tonight. I'm really looking forward to collaborating with y'all in support of Newark students. I'd also like to just give one more shout out, uh, to, uh, board members, uh, Wynn and Plankarte, for all the wonderful work that they've done over the last several years as well. Thank you, everyone, and looking forward to a great few years ahead.
Thank you, and I too would like to welcome our new board members, Mr. Aguiano, did I say that right? And Mr. Block? Uh, I'm, I'm.
It's going to be close.
I'm, I'm really, um, hopeful and, and looking forward to the next year and two or two that I'm going to be here. And, uh, I think we are on the cusp of great things happening in our district, and, uh, and I think it, it all, everything has to do with, with the quality of, of our Board and our staff, and really appreciate all of you. Thank you. Oh, one other thing, I wanted to, to thank Superintendent and Kat Jones for doing, Ms. Jones, Vice Pres, President Jones, for doing a great job, um, on setting up the Board meetings for next year. I think, I think this is going to work out great.
Great. Well, thank you. I too would just like to, um, welcome the two of you, and welcome you back, Member Hill. We're glad that, uh, that you're all here, and I look forward to really working collaboratively with, with all of you, and, um, listening to ideas, and making some really powerful decisions, uh, for the students of, of Newark. for the students of Newark. This is, this town is, the students in this town are, are, mean, a ton to me. So I'm choked up for words, because the students of this town just mean that much. My passion has definitely been here to serve for the children, and really glad to be able to be here to do this, so, in this opportunity. So thank you. I look forward to working with staff and the Board, and just making some, continue to make the powerful changes that we've been making. Yes?
If I could add just one more thing, which I suspect that my fellow board members will echo. I think that we want to wish everybody a happy holiday, and, and especially staff for all of your hard work. And, yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's been a lot. I think we all know it's been a lot, but, and I think that we're, we're about to earn some well-deserved rest, and, and peace, and happiness, and so wishing everybody a happy holiday and a happy new year.
And if I could just add one more thing, good luck to all my peers, wishing you all the best of luck on your finals, hoping you guys all pass, and, and also congratulate, I forgot to congratulate you guys on being president and vice president.
Thank you. Yes. So definitely happy holidays to everyone. Enjoy your, your break, Eva, and please take more than a day. I know you all too well. Take some time for yourselves, be with, spend time with your family. Enjoy that, because it's the only one you've got, so you know, it's, it's really super important to spend that time with family. All right, and with that. Superintendent Akar, it's all yours.
Thank you. Well, happy holidays back to everyone and to our community, and everyone that works so hard here in the district. On behalf of my entire team, we wish all of you a very happy holiday. We are happy to help continue to serve, and I really just want to thank my team that's up here. It's wonderful to have a team, but behind them also are a lot of people that help make a lot of things happen, and so on behalf of all of us, we want to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and we look forward to seeing you at the beginning of the school year.
All right, great. Thank you. And with that, I will adjourn the meeting.